Okay, we need to have a roll call before we get the meeting started. Again, uh, Mr. Seagars, you're here?
Yes.
Mrs. Backus?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Mr. Milling?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meadows?
Present.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Curtis Boyd is here. I think that's, we need to tell everybody else is that all the department heads and all are here, city lawyers here, Kim Mettles?
I'm here.
Okay. I think that should be fine. All right, we'll call it an order to meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we need to read this first, I appreciate everybody tuning in today, those around there on Facebook watching us. While this is not our normal means of holding a meeting, we will continue to work for our citizens. We ask for your patience during this first digital meeting. This meeting will be conducted in a respectful manner. Please turn the ringer on your cell phone off. Please do not interrupt anyone, or all the audio will cut out and no one will hear anything. You may dial in to listen to the meeting at two five three, two one five, eight seven eight two. I'll read that number one more time. You can dial in at two five three, two one five, eight seven eight two. By phone with the meeting ID number, okay, the meeting ID number, I'll read it twice. Five seven, two three, one four, seven nine eight. The meeting ID number is five seven, two three, one four, seven nine eight. To maintain order, all the phone in participants will be muted. If you unmute yourself, you will be ejected from the meeting. All comments must be communicated via Facebook Messenger or chat to be read by city staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. You may send comments in advance for the meeting on any topic and on the public hearing question. Votes for counsel will be done in well-called fashion. The order I just called, I want to go to Mr. Seagars, Mr. Seagars, Mrs. Backus, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Milling, Mr. Meadows, Mrs. Reed, and myself. Mrs. Rock will read out any comments or questions that have been mailed or emailed in prior to the meeting. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the city's website, www dot Darlington S C online dot com. That's Darlington S C online dot com, under counsel minutes. It may take up to forty-eight hours for the recording to be uploaded. We will indicate on the city administration Facebook page when the post is complete. Thank you for your patience with us during this extraordinary time. All right, and uh, thank you everybody for tuning in today. I have Pastor Kevin Colly who's going to say the prayer for us tonight. As always again.
Lord, you are the saint, and yesterday, and today, and forever. And that means that our confidence is built upon you, and that we trust that you hold us in your hands. Lord, you have given government for the, for our good, that we may live, lead, lead, that we may live godly and peaceful lives, dignified in every way. We thank you, Lord, for these public servants who meet today to make decisions that impact who we are as a community. We pray gracious Lord for you to guide and to give wisdom. We pray gracious Lord that everything that they do will be filled with your love. And we ask that as we look to this peculiar time in which we live, where so many lives are at our impact, that you would remember those doctors and nurses and other healthcare providers who are working hard to protect and to heal and to renew life. And Lord, we pray with thanksgiving, Lord, the courage that they have. And we pray, Lord, that their healing, that you would work through their gifts to bring about healing, and that you would protect them. Lord, we pray that you would give to us in this time, a love that binds all things together in harmony.
Hallelujah.
The time for us to come together as, as a community. And to look at the hope and the joy that you have set before us, and to know that you raise up people who can overcome and who can know victory. Lord, fill us with that hope that never surrenders and that continues to fight and that can love even when we may be weary of the world and feel like we cannot love anymore, for we know that it is your love that overcomes all fears. This we pray in the name of your son, amen.
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 All right, uh, so the pleasure of the agents. If you stand up, I'll let everybody else see us, so we'll do it again. All right, my pleasure, agents, salute to the flag of the United States. Intended to the public, we will let you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and redemptive. All right, um, number three, we have approval for uh, minutes for the city council meeting, March the second, March the third, uh, six P M, six thirty P M. Do we have uh, a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion that we approve, the minutes for council meeting, uh, March second and March third.
I second.
A minutes, a minutes. Okay, we got a second?
I second.
All right, everybody in favor, we have uh.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
All right, any knows? All right, all in favor then, it's passed. All right, number four, do we have a uh, motion to approve uh, meeting agenda for tonight?
Sure, I make the motion that we approve the meeting agenda for our city council meeting, meeting tonight, April seventh, two thousand twenty.
A second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
In favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Elaine, you out of order, you gotta get in your spot. You get somebody else's spot.
All right, let's try it this way, uh, oh, we'll talk to him again. All right, uh, we have approval for a meeting agenda for number four. Now, when we do it, uh, just say your name and then say aye, then we'll know, everybody out of Facebook can see what we're doing, who we are. All right, we're, we're all learning as we go, it's okay. All right, uh, number five, uh, report to standing committees, uh, Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, uh, Mrs. Rock?
Yes, sir.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, uh, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Yes.
All right, well, uh, my report, uh, Joey Salidi took home the championship belt as the People's Choice Award winner at the first Joe's Grill and DDRH L A Championship in March, before all this COVID nineteen stuff. And this will be an, an annual event to raise funds for the fire department. Chris Gany from Bill's Grill and Patrick took home the owner's choice award from the ten participating teams. And we hope to get more local businesses involved next year. Car show winners were Reese Hadlock in first, Calvin Kelly in second, and Eddie McCall. Our monthly Nether Breakfasts have been suspended until further notice based on the social distancing guidelines set forth by Governor McNamara's executive order. We plan to reschedule the annual Taste of Darlington, which was originally set for April twenty-third, and we'll be looking for participants once we get a new date set. Our annual D R A golf tournament has been rescheduled for Wednesday, May twentieth, at Darlington Country Club. Four, four-person package choice teams play eighteen holes on a beautifully remodeled course after delicious buffet lunch. Tickets and whole sponsorships are still available, the winning team will take home tickets to the Southern five hundred, thanks to Carefree Bank, Darlington Raceway, Bit and Gold Dims, and Nationwide Insurance for helping us present this event again this year. And the D R A also plans to continue our bringing down the Carolina Concert Series with its first event, a community karaoke party from seven to ten P M, Thursday, May seventh, at Liberty Lane and Pearl Street. Should the COVID nineteen outbreak continue to limit gatherings, we will reschedule this event two weeks past the previous date as needed, until we can actually have the event. Other things that we can look forward to, we have our race week party the Friday night, the weekend, September fourth, another pre-king downtown live free concert Thursday afternoon, the twenty-second, at Liberty. Thank you members, yeah.
All right, thank you Lisa. All right, uh, Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce, it was supposed to be Nancy Matthews, Howard Garland is going to be presenting that.
I have something that's provided to me by the uh, chamber, uh, I'll read it. As always, the chamber is in the planning stages of Freedom Fest, which will be held July eleventh, twenty twenty, at Darlington Raceway. The stage is ordered, the band is booked, the rides are being reserved, the vendors are reserving spots. The new fireworks company has the date on the calendar. The Chamber of Commerce is presenting the Freedom Fest, however, we do have two backup contingency plans in case we're continuing to practice social distancing. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce would like to request sponsorship from City Darlington for Freedom Fest twenty twenty and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, as this historically has been the amount that the city has done. In years past, the city has been one of our best sponsors of this event, and the Chamber hopes to do it again for twenty twenty. Freedom Fest is the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce's annual Independence Day celebration family event at Darlington Raceway. It's a large-scale event that brings thousands of people to our beautiful community each year, many of whom come from outside of our county and outside of our state. This event places Darlington in the spotlight and contributes not only to the local economy, but also to the tourism. Through the support of the city, the event has continued to grow exponentially in size, so much that we're bringing in a marketing company, iHeart Media, to assist in marketing the event throughout South Carolina. The Chamber has also begun a recovery plan for City of Darlington and our businesses, part of a grand reopening of our beautiful Darlington. The Chamber, and hopefully in partnership with City of Darlington, plans to do a giant ribbon cutting for Darlington once the crisis has passed. We hope we can all come together in our public square. The Chamber is planning on inviting all citizens and businesses to the square to cut the ribbon, to reopen our city for future business, and invite restaurants to participate and offer food and beverages for people in attendance. This hopefully will jumpstart the recovery and the morale of our great community. Prior to the ribbon cutting, we had a parade with a lineup of cars, golf carts, and bands. It would come through town with sirens and lights to welcome everyone from isolation to the grand reopening of Darlington. That was submitted by Harriet Hobbs and Anna DeWitt of the Darlington Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Howard. All right. Uh, thank Lisa, you're going to present, uh, citizens wishing to appear before city council, did you have any comments from any citizens, Lisa?
I have not received any by email, mail, or um, on Facebook here that were not just general questions that could be answered.
Listen, I want to speak for a second, let's just make sure next time, um, seven days before we have the meeting, if we can just daily put out how that people can put in questions that will have a clear line of communication.
Yeah.
I don't think we knew at the time, uh, seven days ago, how we were going to do this, so.
Yeah, this was, yes. We apologize if somebody didn't get anything in. Again, this was all going together quickly, so we keep going, continue this, so uh, we'll do that for sure next time if we have to continue this way. All right, um, number seven, unfinished business, uh, a public hearing ordinance, two thousand twenty dash oh one, property purchase seventeen fifty-five Haribird Highway, Olin Curvin, uh, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, one hundred sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields. Uh, it's a public hearing ordinance, do you have any mail on that?
So, have we said it?
Any comments about it, written or otherwise?
Okay. All right, Elaine?
I was just saying, are we at a point where we can set the public hearing? I mean, can we, you know, especially with all of the coronavirus and all of, all of that, can we even think of that?
Lisa, have you posted it out yet?
It has been, uh, posted in the newspaper of record for the county, uh, prior to the movie, roughly thirty-one days before. So people did have the opportunity to write in their comments.
Okay.
That are coming.
So, and, and we have a, I got you, so.
And it says it was done thirty-one days ago. All right, uh, do we need to make a motion on this to approve it, the public hearing ordinance?
Okay. I make a motion that we do have a public hearing, that the public hearing ordinance that we approved that. Twenty twenty dash zero one, property purchase, purchase seventeen fifty-five Haribird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero 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 two zero six three, one hundred and sixteen acres at six hundred thousand for ball fields.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Say your name if you will and say, uh.
Seagars, yes.
She would, yes.
Bryant, yes. Meadows, yes.
Milling, yes.
Reed, yes.
Curtis Boyd, yes. All right, um, we have a hundred percent on that, it's passed. All right, unfinished business part B, second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty dash oh one, property purchase seventeen fifty-five highway, uh, Haribird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, four hundred sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields.
Mr. Mayor, John Millie here, just have a question. The, on the part A for number seven, is it figured that Ms. Reed was making a motion that we have a public hearing? I'm trying to understand whether we have just had a public hearing since notice has been given, or are we making, or is she making a motion to have a public hearing at some point in the future?
The public hearings aren't being had, and Elaine, what was your motion?
The, so what we, what we had is seven eight, was a public hearing in which there was no input. So what we're really having now is a motion to pass the ordinance following a public hearing.
Yeah, right. What, what, I clarified it once he made me understand that the, that the notices that we had had thirty, it had been.
Right, but I just wanted everybody to understand, you made a motion to have a public hearing, but in reality, we were having a public hearing at that time, and Lisa Rock was indicating that no one had provided any comment in connection with that public hearing. And so now we are moving to the question of whether or not we are going to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
But John, that's what I was saying, I corrected myself and said, uh, we are proving that we are approved the public hearing ordinance. That's what, so that, it, I'm taking it as this a done deal.
Yes, okay, we're good.
Okay.
All right.
So Councilman Backus, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on this, um, property, if we purchased this property and it remains in the county, um, how are we going to police this property? Are we going to have, um, question, how are we going to police this property? This is located in the county.
Chief Washington? Lisa? Lisa?
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I don't believe that we will have jurisdiction out there, um, because, um, unless that property is within the city limits of Darlington, um, the city police, um, will not have any jurisdiction there, um, which also raises an issue about the fire response as well, so we may, uh, want to get, um, Chief Kavanaugh to chime in as it relates to the fire response.
When it comes to the, may I say something?
Go ahead, Howard, right.
When it comes to the police response, we had a mutual aid agreement with the sheriff's department. Couldn't we assume that they would help, um, but then it comes to if we have police presence at our ball games, would our city officers still be allowed to be out there for the police presence if something was to come up? Could they, they call the sheriff's office to have some official, um?
The mutual aid agreement doesn't work like that, Councilman Gardner, um, the mutual aid agreement, um, is such that because it's the sheriff's office of responsibility, then we would have to assist them. Because that is in, you know, that's in their purview, not ours, it's their jurisdiction, not ours. So, I, I could not call them to assist me in their jurisdiction.
Mayor?
Yes, please, sir.
Um, mayor, uh, this is like any other piece of city property that we own that is not in the corporate limit, such as the sewer treatment. Obviously, our officers can be there, I'm not exactly sure what the question is.
Want to say one more time, you cut out a little bit.
Yeah. Uh, this is just like any other city property that we own that is not in our jurisdiction. Uh, for example, this water, wastewater treatment plant is not in city limits, but I'm sure that our officers have gone out there and checked it, and fire as well. So I don't exactly understand what the question is in status.
Yeah, well, if I made, um, Mayor Boyd respond to the, to, to, um, Ms. Rock's response, there, there's a difference between going and checking on a property and having arrest powers within that jurisdiction. Those are two totally different things. If we just ride by a piece of property, that's one thing, but to be able to police a piece of property and, and have arrest powers, um, you know, for the people that are in that particular jurisdiction, those are two totally separate things. And so I don't want to mix apples and oranges here.
I'm not sure what this, um, Backus' question was then.
So if there's an event at the baseball stadium, at the stadium, if there's some games going on, there always should be police at the games. The question is, who has the authority to police the property doing events?
At this present point, as a police chief, I would say that the sheriff's office would have that authority.
So, um, okay, so a lot of this is contingent on the fact that we can annex properties. Is that still on the table, does that seem like viable options for us in purchasing this?
We were told by the camp, by the Charles Stewart, that if we didn't, at the racetrack, when we talked with them, if they were not able to annex in, that, that we would still get city, we would still get the hospitality funds from, if we put a property out there. If we put a restaurant in or out there, was the question, if we would be able to retain, uh, hospitality, uh, funds from the restaurants. And they confirmed that we would, with Charles Stewart confirmed that to us.
Okay. So this is, this is on the council that they have at the county now. Going to event that the council may change at the next election.
They would be in writing.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Is that bound the North Council, I don't think it's bound the next council, does it, Mr. Gardner?
They have to take it up, and, um, county council, we're going to change that agreement, would have to pass a similar ordinance or resolution, whatever way they pass it, to enter into the agreement to reverse such agreement.
Right, that's my question, question, that's the point I'm making, is the next council that comes up is not bound by that agreement. The next council.
That they'd have to take affirmative action to undo it.
Right.
I just said, I'm just making a point. But the next council do have an option of not sticking to the agreement. Mr. Gardner?
If you, if you get an agreement signed by the county, I, I feel like they would honor it if it's something that they sign where they say, they would pay the hospitality tax back for a certain number of years. We have standing agreements with the school district for, uh, Blue Street. We had a standing agreement with the school district for Virgil Wells Stadium before we bought that. We have a standing agreement with the school district for the tennis courts, where we share the cost half and half with them. This is slightly different, but we've had a good reception from the county administrator, he's talked individually with county council members and those that are currently on board, have no objection to that, but that being said, we don't have anything right now on writing, but we do feel good about them giving us the hospitality funds that we would collect on side of these concessions. Now, the accommodations is a little different because that goes from state to South Carolina, through the, um, the tax commission, that would have to come back to the county, and the county would have to cut that stuff to us if we ever were able to go to hotel motel on that side.
All right.
And somebody's going to be able to buy a hotel. Correct.
And, and assuming that we don't get the ability to annex it in, um, so.
For golly, those, those, those measures for to ensure us like those monetary benefits.
We also have, um, assuming that, um, we got the letter from P D Electric saying that we, of course, they'll give us a loan, we don't, we weren't looking to try to get a loan on that, but they're already willing to give a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Uh, they had told me and Howard, that was both, we spoke out there, that they had additional money that they, uh, would be able to do in the following year, but they would be willing to start out on a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant toward us.
So, do we make a motion, do we need a motion?
We do, do we have a motion? The emergency program?
Well, I make a motion on the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash zero one, dash property per, purchase seventeen fifty-five Haribird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, one hundred and sixteen acres at six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields.
Elaine, do we have a second?
I think it is to approve, is to approve.
Do we have a second to motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Mr. Seagars?
Seagars. Seagars basket, all right, I'm going repeat, yes.
Mr. Seagars? Yeah, is Michael? Bill, is Mr. Seagars, is Michael? Looks like he dropped off, you know. Okay, I'll call him. All right, Mrs. Backus?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Milling?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed, you already, you already made the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd, yes. We're waiting on Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Seagars on. It's nice telling.
It's officially passed, do we have to wait on him?
I don't know.
I guess everyone has to vote, but he's technically left the meeting.
John Seagars is saying that his, his picture froze and it's just sitting there, he's trying to get back on now. Howard, do we need to wait for him, or can you say what he said, or? Um, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that, um, what you may want to do is just wait a minute or two and see if, if, wherever we get him back on. Um, we did have something else, I can, I can talk about the chamber, um, that was supposed to be a motion to come out of that to, um, sponsor the, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for Freedom Fest, but, um, just wanted to be able to mention that, since we're away. Did you bet on that, why, when you said that, or was, we're just going to talk about it later? Uh, well, I believe I, the notes said that they, they wanted it to be brought up tonight, that's, uh, let me check the notes here.
That's correct, Howard, um, Anna DeWitt sent me an email, but also the chamber board in.
That's correct. Howard, um, Anna DeWitt sent me an email that also the chamber board and we were supposed to discuss that earlier. We just felt how it kind of skipped past it. So.
Yeah, we did, yeah, usually we don't, on those things, as we don't, you know, we don't wait on it, but anyway.
Yeah, it's not even an item on the list as well.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I posed a que- question, um.
Yeah, it's not even an item. So I don't have to vote on that without giving the public, you know, prior notice.
It's not even their, their information, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we can take it for information, of course.
No, no, it isn't their information that you think we didn't present, I, uh, I just didn't see it anywhere. That's why I'm asking the question.
And was all of us voting without that? Can we just know that we had tactics or difficulties and?
Well, we can wait one more second here, let's see.
I have him on the phone and I'm working with him on this, so bear with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that will be known to have. Everybody.
unanimous, okay, so it is a big item.
Mi- Mr. Licks, we could also get him to call in by phone and just see what the other video feed, if that's easier for him for this meeting.
Bill, if you could put him on, uh, speakerphone, maybe then you could do that. All right, Bill, he's on the phone.
Yeah, he's on, he's gonna dial into the meeting. Bear with him.
Will he be left out?
Right.
Technology is great, long as it works.
I see that all the time.
Oh, I know.
Kinda missing my monthly chocolate fix.
Yeah.
How I, what I'm gonna do about my candy.
We should have dropped you some out of the door.
I'm telling you.
We'll make sure you get some.
Even seeing right, I'm sitting here without, can't reach into anything here. I'm trying not to keep too much here.
Kind of like beyond Brady Bunch, everybody up on the screen like that.
Yeah.
Hey, babe.
You can call it what you want, but it is nice to socialize with other people.
Yeah, I think after this, everybody will mind social, please, social distancing.
Yeah.
Hello, do you hear me?
Hi.
Do you? All right, Mr. Seagulls, thank you for joining back with us.
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Seagulls, everybody has voted on, out of B, number seven, uh, B. Everybody has voted, um, yes, we were waiting on your vote for the second reading ordinance. Seagulls, yes. Okay, well, then we have a vote to purchase the second read or for the second read ordinance, twenty twenty dash over. For the property purchase of seventeen fifty five Harburg Highway from Alden Curvin. One, two, six dash oh, two dash oh, one, two, six dash zero, zero dash oh, two dash zero, six, three. A hundred and sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, do you want to go back to, um, the Chamber of Commerce?
I don't think we can go back to that because as someone pointed out, it wasn't actually on the agenda.
Okay, that's right, true. Thanks, and, uh, um, we can bring it up next time, we'll discuss it and put it on the agenda the next time. Um, make new business, A, the USDA grant award acceptance for police cars. Let's see if we got some, Mr. Chief. Chief Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council, I'm sorry. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Garland, uh, distributed, um, the grant, um, applicat- actually, we've already applied for the grant. Uh, we've been approved, um, uh, for the grant and tonight, um, we just need to vote to accept the grant. The grant is for, the total grant is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, um, the total amount of the project, excuse me, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The federal government is going to give us fifty thousand dollars towards, um, towards, uh, that project. Um, it is through the USDA Community Facilities, um, grant, um, and we would be per, we would be purchasing three patrol cars, uh, for the City of Garland.
Very good job. Thank you, sir, for doing it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the USA, USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars?
I'll motion that we approve the USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Sheila. All right, uh. All right, like, do we have everybody in favor? Seagulls, yes.
Millie, yes.
Nettles, yes, yes.
Reed?
Gardner, yes.
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, so the motion is passed for the USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars. Thank you.
Mr. Garland has his hand up.
Yep, we, um, Stuart Hux is here with USDA tonight also. He needs to explain some of the requirements of the grant. It's something that's, is required in every public meeting before we accept the USDA grant. I believe we have Stuart Hux well with us. Don't we, Bill? Lynch?
Yes, and I just unmuted.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, just a few things to, to make you aware of. Uh, Chief Washington did a good job explaining where we are. Um, we made a, you made application, we're at to the point now in the process where we're ready to fund the request in the amount of fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, does everybody have a copy of the letter of conditions for this project? I have, I had sent, I, I know Howard's got one and I sent him the, uh, form. There were ten forms that go along with the letter conditions that will need to be signed and attested and returned to me so that we can, uh, obligate the funds or commit the funds for this project.
We got those today. Sorry.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we got those today, so we have not sent them to council yet. We've made copies, but we haven't, we haven't, actually, this person to council.
One of those is the grant resolution. If you will record tonight's vote on that. And then when you have it signed and attested, you can just, uh, scan them and email them back to me. That'll be fine.
Stuart, is there anything? Sorry, um, is there anything?
Go ahead.
Does you need to have, does you need to read tonight, uh, uh, we've already accepted the grant? I know it used to be when you were in person with us, that we would sign probably fifteen or twenty things along with the city seal. We'll just do that tomorrow and have it done another eyes by the, um, this prison. Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Those, those are the, uh, ten things that I sent you, uh, on email today, so that'd be fine. If you'll just get those, uh, signed and attested and, uh, returned to me, that'll give me what I need. There'll be some, there'll be some additional things that I'll send you tomorrow. It'll be things that, information that I need for you to get back to me in addition to those forms. And it'll be simple things like, uh, one of them is I need an updated list of council members' names. Uh, you need to understand that you have six months to complete this project. Uh, we'll need, I need copies of the bids for the vehicles, which I, I'm assuming you're going through state purchasing, is that correct? For these vehicles?
You'd have to ask Chief Washington about that.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so the procurement procedures have been met because the state take care, takes care of all the bid requirements for you. So I, I'll just need a copy of the, uh, invoice or the quote, uh, based on whatever type of vehicle you're getting. You'll send those to me and let me approve those upfront prior to us dispersing the money. I need that. I'll send you a, uh, form that need to record the race and gender of council members and employees so that I can do our compliance review. And you can just give me that information. I'll complete the review based on that. Uh, there'll be some forms that we'll need to complete once we close the grant and disperse the money. And that'll be closer to time that you actually take delivery of the vehicles. The what, what is the lead time or lag time on the vehicles? And I guess, I guess you'll have to get the vehicles and then get them striped and put radios and lights and everything on them too. So you'll, you'll be taking them as turnkey, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll work through that process as we get further along in there. Is that something you can take immediate delivery on or are they gonna have to order that from the factory? Do you know, do they have it on the lot?
We're gonna most likely have, we're gonna most likely have to order them. Initially, when you and I spoke and we worked on this, uh, grant proposal, uh, we were trying to get sedans. Um, we've just been notified about thirty days ago that they're not making any more, um, police sedans. And in fact, some of the folks that have, who had orders in, their orders were canceled. So, um, we may need to make some adjustments, um, as it relates to, to what we're being, um, ordered. And I'll get in touch with you and we'll go over all of that.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. So, yeah, there, there'll be a process we'll work through to get, get from, uh, where we are tonight, where we dispersed the money. But this is an important first step for, uh, council to vote to accept the letter. So I appreciate, uh, Chief Washington, appreciate your help getting to this point. Howard, thank you for, for what you've done. And, uh, we'll move forward from here.
And while Stuart's here, let me mention that this is the sub grant that the City of Garland has received since two thousand and eight. We have used it, uh, the refurbisher in the courtroom, we've used it for police cars several times also. For numerous pieces of street equipment for the Street and Sanitation Department. So thanks to Stuart Hux and the staff in Florence for all the work they've done for the City of Garland over the years. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all for what you do. All right, uh, new business, part B, uh, resolution adoption of two thousand and eighteen International Building Code. Alex?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a few months ago, the, uh, state, uh, two thousand and eighteen codes. And I believe we came to y'all a couple of years ago about adopt, adopting the two thousand and fifteens. We just need to stay through two thousand and eighteen. Um, we need to adopt those and also we're looking to adopt chapter one, uh, administrative.
Okay, the motion, which is the motion on that? We have a motion to adopt, um, resolution adoption, two thousand and eighteen International Building Code.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution adoption, two thousand and eighteen International Building Code.
We have a second? Uh, which one do I can do? All right, Seagulls?
Yeah, yes.
Gardner? Brian?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was me.
I think, Bill, and you, uh, seconded it, Howard Nettles?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
All right, and Boyd, yes. All right, so it's passed the resolution adoption of two thousand and eighteen International Building Code. All right, uh, number new business, part C, Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives. I think Lisa, you'll present that.
Yes, I do. Um, as many people have noticed, the old huddle house is being transformed into the Holt Brothers Public Express. Uh, in twenty seventeen, this council approved economic development incentive packages. Uh, will have to individually come before you to be approved, and this is one of those such packages. And that is, the incentive agreements included in your packet will be brief highlights of it to you, um, for the record. Um, the development will locate at fifteen oh three South Main Street. The name is constructed in February twenty twenty and plans to be fully operational by summer twenty twenty. And of course, obviously, this application is made prior to the COVID nineteen. I'm not certain that that's gonna affect it since it is gonna be another dining, uh, more of a Uh, they developed this at this location through January three at least. The development intends to invest a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital expenses. They intend to hire as many as twenty five full-time employees. And they intend to hire with a preference for those living in Arlington County. And the combined investment of the development, including a credit of fifty thousand dollars per job created exceeds one million dollars. In return for this new investment, developers requesting that the city provide the following reimbursement of benefit of building during the initial phase, reimbursement of business license taxes in the following manner. One hundred percent for the first taxable year of operation or proportion thereof. Sixty-six percent for the second taxable year of operation and thirty-three percent for the third year of taxable operation. And we are requesting reimbursement of local hospitality taxes at a rate of fifty percent for a period of twelve months. Now, based on our calculations and good e- good faith estimates for the cost of physical improvement, jobs created. The development will meet or exceed the minimum investment requirements based on business anticipated business license fee of six hundred and twenty-nine dollars eighty cents. Additional property revenue of additional utilities revenue of approximately seven hundred dollars annually. And a job investment credit of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand based on twenty-five employees. Additionally, the development will improve the entrance to the city by bootcapping a derelict building that is at our gateway. The amount of incentives granted to the development shall not exceed the value of the direct or indirect benefits of the development. And that's clear, uh, when you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital investment plus one point two jobs. We're certainly not, we're, we're moving close to that act. Now, these are obviously, the program is based, these, uh, incentives were made based on the program. So, three hundred and twenty seventeen and, and these are to be reviewed on. These are also reimbursement incentive. So the developer will have to submit a, uh, request for incentive repay and prove that they've they've, um, they pay their hospitality taxes every month and then on the July thirtieth, thirty-first of each, they will submit it the form to request those funds back. they will submit in the form to request those funds back based on the incentives.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So do we, if we approve this, would we automatically write them back, for example, a check for the business license of six hundred? They haven't applied for a business license yet, correct?
No, sir. They will pay upfront for every one of these things.
Right.
The thing that will be given them, July 31st of next year, to get their building permit fees back, their business license tax back, and their hospitality tax back at a rate of 50%. And they have to show that they have those employees and that investment was made before we write them a check. They got a, got a price, and then if they don't have an opening, they're not gonna get any money.
Right.
The total amount, can you figure, I haven't gotten the figures for the final building permit fees, but you're talking, you're talking around $7,000 now that we're giving back.
Say it one more time. It's like that a little bit.
We're talking about, about $7,000 of incentive money, essentially.
That we were trying to...
Yeah.
We will be returning that amount, or is that 50%?
The amount we will be returning, yes, ma'am.
That'll be based on the hospitality taxes is included in that $7,000?
Yes, sir. So if they pay, let's say, and I'm using a round number, but just for round numbers sake, they pay $1,000 a month of hospitality tax they collect. They submit that to the city every month. In July of the, of next year, they ask for half of that back, and we write them a check, half of what they actually collect. So if they think they're gonna get $1,000 a month, and they get more, we'll give them back what we'll be getting them too.
So if they did do that, with the $12,000, that would get $6,000 back, plus the 629, the 1120, and the 701. So they would get six, seven, around $8,000 back that we would then...
They will get the property tax money back. They will rebegin the building permit fees, half the hospitality tax, and then the business license fee.
But they get all of the business license. The only 50% is the hospitality.
Yes, 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 indeed.
They would get number one, two, and three.
Hospitality tax for one year, and it'll be all of the business license tax for their very first year or portion thereof. So when they go into business this summer and get their business license, whatever they pay, they're gonna get back next year. Then they will get 66% of whatever their business license fee is the second year of operation. And in the third year, they'll get 33%, assuming that they meet the standards of who we are gonna continue.
After three years, Lisa, they would have nothing coming back.
Correct.
And after one year, they would have nothing coming back on the hospitality tax.
Correct. After 12 months, they will not have any money coming back from hospitality.
Additional property tax revenue, 1120 annually, that's what I'm...
The additional property tax is the improvement value to their property. That's not something that we can adjust. And as required by law, we have to stay what their improvement and their investment is gonna be and how that will financially impact the city and county.
And if for some reason they did not meet their benchmarks, we would not be obligated to comply with our agreement?
Correct.
Yes, I see that.
Okay.
Sounds like a big deal.
Well, they have definitely, already made it look a lot better, I think, so.
Yeah.
Better than it was looking. I know that they will continue after all this is over. So do we have a motion to approve new business, Part C, Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives.
According, according to our packet, that has an ordinance number of 2020-03. So Elaine, you probably need to use that in your motion.
All right. I just put my little paper away with all that numbers on it. Okay, here we go. I'm looking at the ordinance, okay. I make a motion that we approve the Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentive Ordinance Number 2020-03.
I will second that motion.
Howard? Mr. Seagulls, you have a motion? Do you have a vote? Do we have Howard? John Seagulls?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Backus?
About, yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Awesome. All right.
And Reed? Yes.
Reed, I suppose you made a motion, sir. All right, so we have it passed for the Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives for this number 2020-03. It's passed. All right, new business, D, Resolution, Project Peach granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County Industrial Park of Arlington and Lee Counties. Howard?
This should be, no discussion. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, this is, this is the thing we've been waiting for, that we're all excited about. The $142 million expansion by Georgia Pacific. We can talk openly about that now. The county had their third reading on the industrial park last night, which is, mostly includes the Georgia Pacific property at the corner of Avenue D and Old Florence Highway in the inclusion of the Joint County Industrial Park of Arlington and Lee Counties. So all we're doing is, we don't have to have an ordinance, it's just a resolution adopting what the county passed last night. And once we get past this and we get away from the non-disclosure agreement which we signed with Georgia Pacific, we can talk about in executive session what this means financially for the City of Arlington, which is quite a windfall, and I'm super excited about it. But we can't really go into any details on that right now, but we, Stafford, just recommendation of passing this resolution quickly, if you can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution for Project Peach, granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County Industrial Park of Arlington and Lee Counties.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Mr. Seagulls, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
This is, you, you, you just seconded it?
I did.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Mr. Nettles?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And yes for both. All right, so we have in favor, all in favor, for the resolution to pass Project Peach, granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County Industrial Park of Arlington and Lee Counties. Okay. Number nine, receive as information, we have department head reports that everyone has been given. If any council members may ask any questions at this time. Mr. Seagulls, do you have any questions for the, for the department head?
I do not.
Mrs. Backus?
I do not.
Mr. Gardner?
I do not.
Mr. Millen?
I do not.
Mr. Nettles?
I did not.
Mrs. Reed?
I deny.
All right, I just have, I don't have a question. I just asked Chief Washington, is it possible, with all this going on, that maybe you can just enlighten everybody, especially with the stay-at-home order today? That we could actually have something from you out there stating what everybody's confirming, what they need to do or not do, support?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The governor's order, while it was, well, I don't wanna say it was specific, and then it lacked clarity. It does, it lacks some clarity as it relates to the stay-at-home order. He's saying stay home, but he also offered a couple of different, a couple of different instances where it would be okay for people to be out. Our folks have been told to encourage people to go home. If they, you know, if they're out doing something legitimate as it relates to the governor's order, then obviously, you know, we won't have any jurisdiction as it relates there. But we're encouraging people to stay home as much as possible. In fact, we put some, we put something on our Facebook account to date, and on our Facebook page, and we've been putting things on there periodically over the last week or so. We've also been encouraging our employees, both police and fire, to, we've actually been discouraging them from having too much personal contact with the public, because as I'm sure most of you all have seen, in some of the other cities across the country, I think Detroit, there this, this virus has broken out in some of the departments, and it has created havoc. And so we definitely don't want anything like that here within our departments. And so we have been encouraging them to practice social distancing as much as possible. If there are calls that can be handled over the phone, then they handle the calls over the phone. N95 masks have been distributed to all of our full-time personnel. They have, they can use them in discretion, but in instances where they are transporting people for whatever reason, whether it be to jail or for some other reasons, they have, they are required to wear those N95 masks because of the closed confinement space. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chief, I just appreciate seeing all of you, and having you, and hearing from you, and creating these, right?
Thank you so much.
So Chief, we're not having any major problems, and everybody's kind of cooperating with the parks, right?
Yes, ma'am. So far, Mr. Garland and I spoke last week about some other concerns that I have with, with what's going on with people and not working. We will discuss that hopefully in executive session at our next meeting, or maybe I'll try to make the rounds over the next week or so and talk with each one of you all individually and express some concerns that I have, that I've shared with Mr. Garland.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you, Chief Washington.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, and again, just to reiterate, please do what the governor has asked. He's not told you that you gotta lock yourself in a house for that fear in yourself. Get as beautiful outside, but stay at home. If you gotta get out and do what's, please, you have to do, it's fine. Let's, let's get this thing over with and get everybody, all these businesses back up and going and get our world back on track. So we appreciate it, and we'll thank all those department heads and everybody else. Any council comments? Mr. Seagulls, any comments?
No, I don't.
Mrs. Backus, any comments?
No, no.
Mr. Gardner, any comments?
Just thank you to the city administration for all you're doing.
Mr. Millen?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Nettles?
Nothing additional here.
Mrs. Reed?
Nothing. Just want everybody to be safe. Thank you.
I would like to thank everybody on the council for working with us on all the projects that we're doing. This was, I think, extraordinary today for everybody to get online and work together as quick as we did. I think other than losing one for a moment, you got my call, Mr. Seagull's father, my call. I think everything went really well. And thank you, everybody in the city departments and all around for working together. I think the city has been safe and done well. We've had some cases, but it looks like we've been remarkable. So just continue to do what we're supposed to do, so that, like you said, we can all get back on the normal schedule.
Mayor?
Everybody, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I was gonna run. Just, just so I understand, the 1755 River Highway, that ordinance still has the annexation language in it, correct?
I think we said that we could, do we have to take that out, or do you believe it in?
That's why, I guess that was my question. I, I mean, I was, my battery died, never hit up in my car, I didn't put it through, I think.
My understanding that we passed it with understanding that the county has agreed to it, we're still gonna pursue that strongly. The only thing that's holding us back from the annexation is the racetrack. They already expressed, carry expressed interest that...